Okay, pledge allegiance? Good evening. Tonight is the May 5th Towns of Hillsborough Planning Board Public Meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 sunshine law. Roll call please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Julian.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Souchi absent. Ms. Delkorn?
Here.
Mr. Estad?
Here.
Ms. Beckarina?
Here.
And Ms. Forrest?
Here.
And Chairman Lepont.
Here. First order of business will be minutes dated April 7, 2016, the regular minute, minutes? Regular meeting minutes, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, all members present are eligible to vote except for Mr. Julian.
Okay.
So moved.
Second? Roll call Tina.
Um, let's see what she has here. Ms. Delkorn?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Souchi's here. Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Estad?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
And Chairman Lepont.
Yes, thank you. Next will be the minutes of the executive session of the same date, April 7, 2016.
Same list, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Moved.
Second? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Delkorn?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Estad?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Chairman Lepont.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so any disposition of any resolutions that I see? We have any board, any planning board business in front of us that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Special committee reports? None. All right, consideration of ordinances, none? So that sends us to...
No business from the floor, if there's anyone...
Any business from the floor that's not on tonight? I think I did that with a turn. Okay, none? All right, so next up will be our public hearing subdivision site plan application called Cisco, S-I-S-C-O, Ped Amure Industries Incorporated, File 16 PV03SRV, Block 142, Lot 28, 186 Route 206, and Block 186, Lot 29. Maximum lot coverage, Lot 28, 61.01 percent where 60 percent is allowable. Existing conditions, minimum lot area, Lot 29. Minimum requested economic hardship waiver, parking stall, parking aisle waiver, and buffer waiver to construct two handicap parking spaces on Lot 28 and 27 parking spaces on Lot 29 to serve as an overflow parking area to Lot 28. On property in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, I-2 Zoning District standards apply. I-1 property fronts on Route 206 revised plan submitted for 12 of 16. That's a lot there. Counselor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Moro Savo Camarino Grant &amp; Shaw in Somerville. I'm here representing the applicant Cisco, also known as Permidor Industries, Inc. One correction, there's no subdivision request. It's just a preliminary and final minor site plan.
Okay.
Permidor Industries is, has been in Hillsborough. It's a family-run company since 1972. And they're, they manufacture lifting magnets and vacuum lifting systems. Permidor Industries, Inc. is also the parent company of Cisco Material Handling. That's the service fleet trucks that I'm sure you've seen. And they're manufacturer of overhead cranes and hoists. I have two, two potential witnesses tonight. I have Tom Decker, who is our professional engineer and our professional planner. He is from Van Cleef Engineering Associates. And we also have William Snyder, who is the president of Permidor Industries, Inc. and Cisco. We have submitted our notice, which has been served and published in The Beacon. And we've submitted our affidavits to the board secretary in anticipation of tonight's hearing. And as you indicated, this is an application for the construction of 29 parking spaces. If you've ever been there, there's no parking left. There's a pretty substantial service fleet arm that services these hoists and cranes. And in general, we, the applicant intends to park employee parking in this new lot. Both lots 29 and 28 are total slightly over 4.2 acres. They're in the LI Light Industrial Zone. And again, as you indicated, this is an application. It seeks one new C-bulk variance for maximum lot coverage on Lot 28. 60 percent is permitted and 61.01 percent is proposed. This also, this application also necessitates C-bulk variance relief for several pre-existing bulk nonconformities as follows, as you indicated, minimum lot area for Lot 29, minimum lot width for both lots 28 and 29, and a minimum front yard setback for lots 28 and 29. Again, these are pre-existing conditions. The application also seeks economic hardship waivers, a parking stall, parking aisle waiver, and a buffer waiver. This application proposes the construction of the two handicap parking spaces on Lot 28 and 27 parking spaces on Lot 29. With respect to comment number two of Mr. White's April 29 engineering review, this property is under contract to be purchased conditioned on these approvals. So it's not the typical scenario where you have, you know, a neighboring property. It's going to be a common ownership. They're going to be in different entities, but they are common ownership, which is why, you know, we're requesting relief for things like buffering because it's not going to really impact the neighbor. Unless there are any legal questions? And therefore, we don't need a cross-access easement at this time. But certainly, if ownership did change, then perhaps that would be appropriate in the future. And unless there are any legal questions, I'd like to swear in Tom Decker and qualify him. I understand he's appeared many times before the Board of Adjustment, but not before this board. So we can qualify Mr. Decker. And we also have Mr. Snyder. I'd like to swear in just in case you have any questions regarding the operations of Permidor and Cisco.
Mr. O'Grodnick, while we have them both come up front, we can swear in both of them. One of you with that mic, one of you with that mic. Otherwise, the gentleman with the camera in the back gets upset. You raise your right hand. You can use the handheld mic, Mr. Snyder. Testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Can you indicate your names, tell your last name for the record?
William A. Snyder, S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R.
Thomas Decker, D-E-C-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to qualify your witness, Mr. O'Grodnick?
Yes, Mr. Decker, can you please give the benefit of your professional licenses and your educational experience?
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1993 and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2000. I've appeared before numerous planning boards, Boards of Adjustment. I'm currently the municipal engineer in Kingwood and Bethlehem Townships in Hunteren County. I also represent the Boards of Adjustment in West Amwell and Alexandria Township in Hunteren County.
We'll accept your call.
Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and explain the application?
Sure. As indicated, well, first to get your bearings. The site's located on Route 206 north of here. The way that the, the plan is oriented, south is, south is actually pointing up. So it's reversed. To the right is the railroad tracks. On the other side of railroad tracks is where the fire was back in February. And currently, Permidor Industries owns the building to the, to the north and all the parking around it.
Are you going to have this marked?
If you'd like, we can have this marked.
Please.
It's, it's the same site plan, grading plan that was in your packet, only with color added to it. We can certainly mark that.
Only mark it as A-1.
A-1. Access to the site from Route 206 is through this, through this entrance, entrance drive, which is currently 25 feet wide. All the access ways to the parking that is there is 25 foot, which when we get to the proposed improvements, you'll see that we're consistent. DOT currently has proposed a jug handle to the south of the site. And that jug handle will essentially come in, go, go around to a light. As you're heading south, you would peel off, come around and come to a light. And then one of provisions of that design is on Lot 28, I'm, I'm sorry, on Lot 29 for the Swiss Orthopedic Building that is there, DOT will realign the entrance into their parking lot from the jug handle and then eliminate their entrance from 206. So in anticipation of that and recognizing that currently Permidor and Cisco have a shortage of on-lot parking for their staff, essentially what happens is they have a fleet of service vehicles that are on-site. When the staff gets there in the morning, the service technicians arrive in their personal vehicles and there's no place for them to park. So what you, what you have is parking that occurs along the, the drive aisle and so forth. And it's not where it's supposed to be. So when coming up with this 27 lot parking space, parking lot, we did two things. One, we tried to align it opposite the front parking lot. And two, we wanted to align it so that when the jug handle is installed, the provision for accessing the Swiss Orthopedic was able to come in. We would lose maybe two, two or three parking spaces in this location they could access and then come in. And it would also provide Swiss Orthopedic with a secondary access through the Permidor property while construction is going on with the jug handle. So that's, that's the, the method behind the madness as to why we put the parking lot where we did. Again, it's 27 parking spaces. I believe there's a typographical error on the plan where it refers to 29. There were 29 at one point and it got scaled back to 27. So we are proposing 27. We are proposing that the parking lot not have curbing. The natural grade within Lot 29 is essentially split down the middle, flowing to the south and the north. So we've crowned the, the parking lot so that the flow would continue where it was originally, flow off the curb, off of the edge of pavement and through vegetation. The Environmental Commission has requested that we put in additional ground plantings there to assist with water quality, and we've agreed to do that. In addition, we've recently received correspondence from the Delaware Canal Commission. And we will be adjusting the design to include porous pavement to satisfy Delaware Canal Commission. With regards to other agencies, we have soil erosion center and control approval. We have not heard back from the county planning board yet. We have a clean bill of health from the fire official, fire marshal. Essentially, that's really all that's being proposed. There, there's no, no other drainage as far as piping and so forth. We're able to accomplish it over, with overland flow. We are removing 41 trees. The trees that are currently out there are mostly red cedars. It's successional growth. I believe in the area, there's only one oak tree that might be coming down. We are requesting the hardship waiver, financial hardship waiver, based on the cost of the parking lot, applying the formula and utilizing the updated unit prices per your, your board engineer. We currently propose four trees based on the adjusted unit prices. I believe that becomes five trees per the counts. If the design of the, of the parking area changes for the Canal Commission with porous pavement and that increases the cost, we would certainly provide the appropriate number of trees according to that, that number. We've reviewed the professionals' reports. I can go through Mr. White's letter if you'd like. In short, we agree to comply with all of his comments. And then as indicated before, we have existing variances. We have a proposed variance for lot coverage. And that is on Lot 28. Currently, Lot 28 has 60 percent, 60, 60.69 percent coverage, which exceeds the ordinance requirement of 60 percent. By adding the connection between the proposed parking lot and the Cisco Permidor property, that increases to 61.01 percent. So it increases by about .32 percent. And that's just to provide the, the connection. As far as Lot 29, Lot 29 currently has 11.51 percent coverage, and we're proposing 27.17. And that complies with the ordinance. So the only new variance that we have is for the small portion of pavement to connect the two parking lots. We are also requesting design waivers. Design waiver for parking space size. The ordinance requires a 10 by 20. Typically, the, the board has granted waivers to an 18-foot length where the vehicle has the ability to overhang the pavement, where you have a two-foot overhang for the pavement. In other words, if we had two vehicles, if we had a parking situation where vehicles were pulling up to, to each other, those spaces, we would definitely design as 20-foot in depth. But in an instance where we have the car's ability to overhang off of the parking lot, that space can be reduced to 18 and still accommodate a vehicle. And that would be consistent with the parking space sizes throughout the rest of the Permidor site.
On the parking lot, you said you're not putting any curbing in. Do you plan to put any kind of bumpers or stops for the cars so they don't go into the grass?
We certainly can do that if, yeah. We can, we can put in bumpers to, to keep the cars from going into the, into the grass, absolutely. And then that still maintains the drainage as...
Yeah, it just prevents damage.
Mr. Chairman, we, the curbing, what we were talking about at the Environmental Commission because they're not subject to the stormwater regs, we kind of recommended more of a vegetation control, similar to the way like if you would see at Duke's Estate, you know? So the bumpers was good. The curbing would almost like, might be... Yeah, might stop the water from kind of going into that vegetation. So that's, you know, I don't know if curbing...
No, I'm saying in lieu of curbing, and since you're not having it, the bumpers...
The bumpers.
Put the bumper stops.
Allow the water to percolate through the bumpers.
I would agree with you on that.
And then also prevent the cars from going into the grass.
Correct.
Yeah, we would agree to do that, to, so that we ensure that the cars don't go off of the pavement. That makes sense. The other waiver that we're looking for is the aisle width. We're proposing a 25-foot wide aisle width. That again is consistent with the aisle width throughout the existing development. And typically, aisle widths in parking areas, 24 feet is kind of a standard. And then you can get larger. But considering this is going to be employee parking, it's going to be regulated primarily by the, you know, the staff who's going to be utilizing that parking lot more than anybody else. And it's consistent with the existing parking, which hasn't been an issue. We would request a waiver for the 25-foot width.
How many of these spots are going to be utilized by the, from the overflow parking that you need? Is this going to max out your need or is there room for growth with this?
No, there's, I believe there's room for growth. Right now, they have, if I remember correctly, 20, 20 service vehicles. This is, this is 27 parking spaces. This will significantly alleviate the traffic concern that they have. You'll have, in that parking area will either be staff, employees coming in, or it could be the service vehicle itself parked up there. Visitor parking would be maintained in the front parking lot. And then there's handicap spaces to the side. Another waiver that we're looking for is for the buffer. The existing lot is only 100 feet wide. By putting in the parking, we're limited to 20-foot buffers on either side. Mathematically, we just can't get anymore. We have centered the parking lot within the lot so we can achieve the 20-foot buffer on adjacent to both lots. We had originally spoken with David Coys when he was the zoning officer. David came out, looked at the site, and kind of recommended that we center, center the parking lot in the middle. We had originally pulled it closer to the Cisco building and then provided the 30 feet to the adjacent. But it was recommended that we center it. And also with the jug handle coming in here, the jug handle comes in and then there's also a proposed, it would be a proposed drive that would come in to access this lot. So really, it would be buffered against a future roadway, essentially. So we'd be looking for that, that relief as well.
Just two follow-up questions. Is it your testimony that by reason of the exceptional narrowness and shallowness of the lots that the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to the applicant?
Yes.
And is it your testimony that the granting of the relief would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Mr. Decker, could you address the handicap spaces that are provided in both sites?
Sure. There are two handicap spaces provided on Lot 28. And unfortunately, the striping for the Swiss Orthopedic does not correctly show on the plan the existing handicap spaces or accessible spaces there. Swiss Orthopedic is in the business of prosthesis and so forth. So obviously, 88 spaces will be required and we will provide the adequate numbers indicated in Mr. White's letter.
So, Mr. Chairman, okay. Anyone from the board?
Just to clarify a couple of points on the tree mitigation. It's a 1.5 percent cap on the project cost. Mr. White redid the, the project cost to up it a little bit. So how many trees are we talking about?
That would increase, that number would increase it from four to five.
Five, okay. Any chance you can add a few more trees? You're all losing 41. I realize 1.5 percent only gives you five, but can you add a few more?
Yeah, I think we can do that. And I think where we would, we would propose doing that is to help enhance some of the buffering.
Okay. And then you said you're going to enhance some of the vegetation to satisfy the Environmental Commission. Will you?
Correct.
Could that be conditioned on Mazer reviewing the types of vegetation you're going to be putting in?
Yes, and the Environmental Commission also asked for a maintenance plan.
And just so we can also clarify the, the parking requirements. If you see in my report, for a medical center, it's one space per 150 square feet with a minimum of 10. For an office, it's one space per 300 square feet. And I'm referring here to the Swiss Orthopedic. Whether or not it's, maybe you could describe a little more what goes on in that building, whether or not it's a, and there are no definitions in the ordinance, so it was hard to apply. So is it a medical center or is it a medical office?
My understanding of their operations is it's not a medical office. It would, I would equate, I would equate it to being you would go to an ophthalmologist to have your eyes examined and you'd go to an optician to get your glasses. In this case, you would go to a physician with regards to needs for prosthesis or so forth. And then you would go to Swiss Orthopedic to have them fit you with the prosthesis. So I do not believe that the folks there, and Mr. Snyder can correct me if he knows any further, I don't believe that they are actually doctors there as more, more, I would say, medical technicians fitting people with prosthesis and so forth.
Okay, it's just, so I'm not sure I'm getting the answer. Is it, is it a medic, would you qualify it as a medical center or an office? If it's an office, it doesn't have a deficiency in parking? If it's a medical center, it has a deficiency in parking?
I would refer to it...
It's an existing deficiency.
More of a, more of an office than medical, only because you're not going to have medical emergencies and so forth. And the professionals that are there are not medical doctors. So I would categorize it more of an office.
Office, okay. In that case, there would be no deficiency in parking on that property. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this witness? Any questions from, in the public for this witness on the testimony? Motion open to the public?
So moved.
Second? A favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions for this witness in the public on his testimony? Okay? Same done? Thank you very much.
I have one more question. I just wanted to clarify.
Calumbo.
Non-public question, non-public question. Just to clarify, so when, when the 206 jug handle is put in, the Cisco driveway will remain open? It's just the Swiss, the Swiss Orthopedic will close?
Correct. What, what happens is when, when the jug handle goes in, they will provide access to the rear of Swiss Orthopedic and this front driveway is removed. The driveway for Permidor Cisco stays, stays as an access point. However, it gets realigned. In order to maintain the distance from the traffic like that will be going in, they're actually going to move this entrance to the north and then kind of put a little bit of an S-turn in it to access the property. So it will still be accessed from 206.
Okay, just to clarify as well, I believe you said that there's a contract purchase? But the lots of these lots, at least they're assumed that at some point they'll be under one ownership? Am I, did I hear that correctly or not?
Lots 28 and 29?
No. Now, they'll, they'll remain separate owners?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have all the necessary access easements in place?
Correct, yes.
Not only for now, but in future, when the jug handle is put in, that there'll be appropriate access to Swiss Orthopedic through your parking lot?
Yeah, it would be a, a cross-access easement that would benefit both parties.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all we have. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
So do you want to do a, just a quick summation again of what we've discussed here and what's going to be changed or added that you're asking for? Want to go through the changes? We added, I think, one extra tree, possibly more, the bumpers?
I think, I believe the testimony was that we will comply with Mr. White's comments with respect to vegetation as reflected in the Environmental Commission hearing for enhanced vegetation and proposed trees. The recent jurisdictional determination by DRCC will increase, likely increase the costs to add a porous pavement surface, which will then potentially impact the buffering, the tree amounts. So we'll certainly comply with, with the ordinance and add any buffering to the south.
Maybe I misunderstood it with my understanding, Mr. O'Grodnick, that Mr. Decker indicated after consultation with Mr. Snyder that they would be interested in doing more trees?
that they would be interested in doing more trees and more vegetation in conjunction with a review by Mazer Associates and the Environmental Commission.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any... I guess I could close.
Anyone else?
Any else from the public? Would like to make a comment, question? Okay. Motion to close public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have in front of us an application that... For allowing parking, increasing, as the attorney said, some possible vegetation opposed to Mr. White's comments. Some bumpers on the parking area. And what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson?
Okay. He's fine. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Delfor?
Yes.
Mr. Esteban?
Yes.
Chairman LaForte?
Yes.
And you can ask, and the alternates.
You can.
Yes, they're... It's a nine-member board. They're eligible tonight.
Okay. Ms. Bevelina?
Yes.
And Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Don't see any correspondence in the packets that we need to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss an issue for an applicant coming up next week.
Okay.
So I think it was this past Monday, we met with two applicants. The one that was here tonight, and also the Meadow... Meadowbrook is coming up?
Meadowbrook, Hillsborough?
Yes.
So I saw a draft of the Environmental Commission's report today that is very comprehensive. And I could read a couple of sentences from the last paragraph, but the Environmental Commission recommends... The commission has concerns about groundwater infiltration, encroachment into the stream corridor, flood hazard area, wetlands, buffing. We do not believe the applicant has satisfied the requirements of the state and local requirements, and further information necessary to assess the impact of this application. The applicant should be able to provide additional information and return to the commission for further review. It's been only a week period between... Since they were here, so both applicants were here Monday. So Debbie Boye had to turn around and report for this. We did a site walk of the Meadowbrook on Saturday. This board will not even receive the Environmental Commission report before... They might or might not by next Thursday. I've seen other applications, but this, the commission's report is very comprehensive, and I'm just concerned that the applicant is going to come here and not let the Environmental Commission do what it needs to do. So I would recommend, I would advise this... The opinion of the Environmental Commission to kind of push the application back, make them come back to the Environmental Commission, address everything that needs to be addressed, and then reschedule the planning board. Also, it seems like a, I don't know, I'm not going to call it a precedent, but it seems that a lot of these applications are coming very close together. I don't know the means or the mechanism to be able to do that. It's almost, I almost get the feeling sometimes that the applicant has kind of figured out the system, and they try to get everything in as much as they can, and all the information has just not come together at the right time. We never got the Mazer report for, you know, for the project, and I don't know if you've had time to review it or not, but it's a lot. And, you know, the volunteers on these commissions do a lot of good work. And I think like, in this situation, I think it's something that we should consider here and kind of talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the Meadowbrook at Hillsborough application, we're advising the board irrespective of Mr. Julian's comments relative to the Environmental Commission, that there are some procedural issues that need to be addressed by the applicant prior to coming to this board for consideration. And therefore, we will be advising them tomorrow, I believe, that we are going to ask them to remove themselves from the agenda for next week and come back at a point in time to address the procedural issues, and I guess also now to address the Environmental Commission issues.
Okay.
So we do need a, and do need a meeting next week. You have an application on.
Right.
But the Meadowbrook application will probably not be on next week's agenda.
I saw...
You've got Weissman, you've got the Hillsborough Realty.
Hillsborough Realty, and then the following week after that is the...
It would be the business meeting, which you have nothing. We're looking at Meadowbrook sometime later.
In June?
Later in the spring, early summer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Julian.
Didn't realize that. You know, but... One more, one more item to add. But I do, I did have concerns, and I do see a pattern that develops, and I just want to kind of make everybody aware of that.
Yeah, the part of the issue is, of course, we have the time of decision. So once the application is deemed complete, the clock starts ticking. We try to schedule it so that we can get the next available Environmental Commission lined up with a board hearing. Now, on those occasions where they perhaps need a second go at the Environmental Commission, the clock is still ticking. So I understand the issue, but we're kind of stuck with that clock unless we go and ask for an extension of some sort before they even get to the board. So we try to the best of our ability to give enough time for the Environmental Commission to weigh in, but if there's a second, again, if they have to go back to the Environmental Commission, it becomes a time issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, with tonight's application, we were able to, we were able to review it and, you know, put the report together and do some of the things we needed to do. But with the Meadowbrook, it just seemed like there is a lot of issues. And, you know, so just don't have the time to kind of get it all together.
Thank you. Mr. Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, if nothing else, we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
By the board, there is an application on next week.
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow, next week, the 12th. Hillsborough Realty.
Taking Meadowbrook still leaves us with an application.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.